Welcome to San Clemente's Video Library. I'm Joanne Bade, City Clerk of the City of San Clemente. To skip this introduction, click on Skip Intro. This video will play on most Internet connections. To fast-forward or to advance to a particular agenda item may require additional loading time. To access a particular portion of the meeting, please click on one of the links on the right side of this screen. The Show Help link below explains various features that are available with this site. If you have questions or encounter difficulties, please call my office at 361-8200. Thank you.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the City cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Jim Davis, Senior Chaplain with the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Please stand for the invocation and afterwards all lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Shall we pray? Our gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day here in San Clemente. We pray your blessing upon our city leaders. We pray your blessing upon all of our students, teachers, and schools. We pray your protection upon our deputies and firefighters. Father, also we pray for those that are the Marines that are in the field. Watch over them and protect them and be with their families in their absence, we pray. Thank you for all the many blessings that we so richly experience here in this place. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Doncheck?
Present.
Councilmember Everett?
President.
Mayor Breitam Hamm?
Here.
And Mayor Brown?
Baker Brown.
Too many Bs.
Doncheck, Everett, that's alright, we've all been there. Yeah, I am here.
Okay. First item on the agenda is San Clemente High School report from City Manager Goodgerson.
Yeah, I get to take over a little bit for the high school as our high school students walk up here, okay? We had, on March the 7th, we had San Clemente High School Recognition Day at the city, and here's a few photos of all our employees dressed up in red and black and white, and we did this all over the city. We actually had a couple, a delivery from the high school of a bunch of pens that we were able to hand out to all our employees as well, or a bunch of our employees anyway. And they came in here, we were actually having an all-employee meeting in here, so they took a bunch of pictures, we took a bunch of pictures, and I think we have, what, two, I guess two of them, two slides here. So, with that, I just wanted to actually present Matt and Gabby if you want to come up and do your report.
Paul, what day was this?
March the 7th, Friday.
You didn't come by the fire station, why?
I did twice, but you weren't working.
Oh, okay. It's a contract relationship.
We really do appreciate these folks when they come in. We all look forward to your high school updates, so, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Well, with that, let's get started with our presentation. So first off, we have kind of a second half of the year interview with Principal Hall. So when he first came here, he really wanted to get everyone on board for making San Clemente going from a good school to a great school, which is always hard when it's already such a good school. One, one way he tried to do that was getting everyone included, meaning the students. So that's through sports, which we have plenty of programs on all, for boys and girls, on the varsity, JV, freshman level, so pretty much any, any school level can play a sport. Then academic programs, such as things like NHS and CSF, which are academic-based honor programs, to even clubs at the high school, which can be anywhere from the environmental club, to the fashion club, to invisible children's club, really anything that anyone's passionate about they can make a club for. And one thing that we were all kind of bummed about was we weren't allowed to get off-campus this year at lunch, you know, senior privilege, it's all cool and stuff, but it was taken away this year. But one benefit has been the lunchtime activities, which I'm going to let Gabby explain from the ASB point of view.
So as a member of ASB, we kind of are in charge of doing like lunchtime activities and pep rallies, things like that. This year, we've kind of had a lot more because it was a huge bummer, something we've been looking forward to for four years, which was off-campus for lunch, got taken away from us. So, yeah, we've been having lots of lunchtime activities, and it's really great when everybody in the school is like surrounded around, like around one area, kind of looking at what's going on, and everybody gets really involved. So that's been really successful this year.
Yeah, there's 3,000 kids on the campus at lunchtime, so when we have an activity, it's always really cool to see everyone right in front of the library, ready, excited for whatever activity it may be. Last thing, we asked Principal Hall what his theory thing about the high school was, and he just said how nice the students were because it was the most warm and welcoming students he's worked with, which I thought was a really cool thing because being new and seeing that just every student he's met has just been so warm and welcoming was a really cool thing about our high school. Next off is baseball. So, this is, let's see if I get the laser pointer here. Do you recognize someone in the bottom right of the picture there? Yeah, wait, look at that. Baseball, starting five and three, we haven't played any league games yet, but we do have one Friday at home against Laguna Hills at 3:30, first one.
What's the batting average?
I'm actually pitcher only. I had a really bad freshman year, so I have to only pitch now because I did so badly.
What's your win-loss rate?
I'm relief, so I pitch like two seasons.
How many seasons have you had?
A few, a few. A few, I've got a few in there.
They'll all be on the card.
Yeah. Recently, we played in the Loire Tournament, which is some of the best teams around the Orange County and LA County area. We got third, which is really cool. We played a lot of the Division I high-ranking teams, such as Los Alamos and Santa Margarita, which were first and fourth in the county, and we beat them both. And we are now ranked fifth in the county, which is one of the best starts we've had recently. So, yeah, Friday, 3:30 at home.
So like we were saying, we've had lots of activities lately, and one of the most recent ones was Battle of Classes, which is basically freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors all battling it out for a prize. So that was the last week of February that we had this. We had a different event every day, and like I said, it's, everybody gets really, really involved, and since we, you know, got the freshmen into it and the sophomores, every class was really kind of rooting together for, you know, their own class. And this picture over here was at our spirit assembly. We actually had an event where we brought out balloons for two members of each class, and they had to pop the balloons, you know, regular-sized balloons with just their bodies, so like hug each other, sitting on it, and then they found out that that was just the practice round, and they had to pop 36-inch, like giant latex balloons, and that was the only way that they could pop them. So it was hilarious, and it was a really, really fun event.
I'm sensing a new council activity we could do during the breaks.
Yeah, it was, it was definitely a surprise when we walked up with those.
No, no, I don't think anyone was excited about that.
Also, we recently had Battle of the Bands, which was on March 7th, and these were some of the bands that participated, and it was actually really fun, and it's really cool to see all the talent that we don't really know about in the school, and all these kids that get together and kind of make their, you know, their own band out of band. So, yeah, it was really fun, and those were some of the bands that got like the most special recognition and were voted as the best.
One of my favorite events is definitely dodgeball. It's coming up, yeah, it's starting. Teams are signing up this week, and games will be started playing soon. Teams of five can compete, and then the final game will be played at the next sports assembly, and then the winner from the, our high school will play winners from the other high schools in our district in a district kind of tournament style, so it'll be really cool to, if you can win that, then you can play Mission Viejo, Capitol Valley, those kind of schools.
If you can dodge a wrench, you can dodge a ball. That's the big slogan. Also, another upcoming event is the Spring Choir Concert. It's Friday, March 21st, at 7:00 PM at Pacific Coast Church. It's $5 for a student or child, and then $10 for an adult. And if any of you guys have been to any of the choir concerts, they're amazing. And this year, they have a new choir director, and he's fabulous, so it's going to be really, really good. And then also coming up at the end of April is the musical, which isn't said here, but, yeah, it's a lot of the same kids from the choir concert, and they're really, really talented.
Pirates of Penzance.
Yeah, you guys should check it out, it's going to be really cool.
And that's it for us.
That is great, you guys, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Hang on, kids, I got one question for you. I saw a piece in the paper last week about San Clemente High School being ranked at the absolute top of the list here in Orange County. Did you guys happen to catch that? You didn't catch? General excellence.
I saw that, it was in the Register.
No, we missed that? I bet Mr. Hall did. I bet he got that. Anyway, I wanted to congratulate San Clemente High School on that. That was a nice, nice accolade in the paper with all the other fancy high schools around town. Just a couple of days ago.
When are you going to be selecting your replacements? When's that going to happen?
We're actually going to have them at the next meeting, so you guys will get to meet them then, maybe briefly, or they're just going to watch, you know, kind of just observe from afar, but, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Thanks.
Next is the presentation of a proclamation to Donald Muir, Chairman of San Clemente's Relay for Life.
Well, I have a really nice plaque here for you celebrating the Relay for Life. I'd like to read you just a few items from this, because I think it would help give just a little bit of information. Love to hear some thoughts also before we, now, I have here a proclamation for you. This is, "Whereas Relay for Life is a signature activity of the American Cancer Society and celebrates cancer survivors and caregivers and remembers loved ones lost to disease. And whereas money raised during Relay for Life activities in San Clemente supports the American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives and creating a world with less cancer and more birthdays. And whereas the annual Relay for Life of San Clemente is a 24-hour event that offers people an opportunity to participate in the fight against cancer. And whereas the Relay for Life of San Clemente is a unique and effective means of enhancing community goodwill while raising funds for the American Cancer Society's programs of research, education, advocacy, and service. And whereas the City of San Clemente is proud of San Clemente's Relay for Life, Donald Chairman, Relay for Life Chairman Donald Muir in this master ceremony is my proponent for their commitment to this important cause. Therefore, I, acting on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of San Clemente, do hereby proclaim..." do hereby proclaim January 26th and 27th as Relay for Life Days in San Clemente and encourage citizens to participate in the Relay for Life event in the high school. And as a, as having lost a father to cancer, I absolutely 100% support everything you're doing. All of us here have been touched indelibly in our lives by this terrible disease, and anything we can do, and these types of things are meaningful, and they give us an opportunity to show that service." So, let's take a picture, and I'd love to hear from you. Oh, that's fair. Sure, of course.
You're such a good model, Mayor.
That was my blue steel post.
You dropped it like that, really?
No, it's good, it's good. Would you mind, please, tell us a little bit more about the event and a little bit about the program?
Okay. Uh, the Relay for Life... Relay for Life is our fundraising event for the American Cancer Society. What we do is we form teams, and each team fundraises throughout the year. Our event is kind of the accumulation for the year. During the event, we have it at the high school track. We stay there 24 hours overnight. We each, um, have a member of each team on the track at all times. It's, it's a lot of fun, we have a lot of activities, we have bands throughout the day, a very nice luminaria ceremony for past cancer people and people that are still survivors. One point I'd like to make that Tim didn't mention is how much fun we have throughout the day. So please come out, check it out, just to see what it is. There's a lot of information to be given out if you have anybody involved in cancer.
Do you have a website or a telephone number that you'd want people to know?
We, we do have a website. Martin? Uh, I can't think what it is offhand.
Relay for Life, look up San Clemente.
Relayforlife.org slash SanClementeCA.
Okay, so relayfor, relayforlife.org slash SanClementeCA. Great, and probably do a Google search, you'll end up in the right place too, or something like that. Wonderful. Sounds like a fun event. That's, that would be great, and so, thanks, I appreciate you for really doing that, and everyone give me a warm round of applause, it's really wonderful.
Next is a report from Francisco Marmaleo and Sue Reese, members of the Board of Directors of the Orange County Human Relations Council.
Good evening, Mayor Brown, council members. I'm Francisco Marmaleo, and this is my colleague Sue Reese. We're members of the Board of Directors of Orange County Human Relations, and we're here tonight to report on some of our work, the work of our nonprofit organization, OC Human Relations in San Clemente over the past year, and to present you with the annual reports, which are, again, going around right now. As Orange County experiences continued demographic change, some cities have struggled this year. Conflicts have developed into profane, abusive, hateful speeches at the public comments periods during council meetings, or even into public demonstrations, and in some cases into disturbances and riots, where civility was often the first victim. In response to this, OC Human Relations, in partnership with the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors and the Association of Cities, conducted a form and developed a document which, again, a copy of which you now have, practical guidelines for managing civility in public forums. OC Human Relations, in partnership with cities, has maintained its capacity to serve as an asset in healing these tense times, and has saved cities' tax dollars in the process. We do this by mediating conflicts, by creating safe, inclusive neighborhoods and schools, by developing diverse leaders, and by understanding, by building understanding and respect among all our residents. Many of our services are county-wide, but tonight, we'd like to share very briefly the following data about some of our additional services last year, last year here specifically in San Clemente. We mediated 120 cases, as well as nine family mediations in the community or courts where at least one of the parties was a resident of San Clemente. In collaboration with the San Clemente Police on Hate Crimes, and with individuals or community groups on hate incidences, we documented one hate crime in San Clemente last year. Ten San Clemente youth participated in our Skills for Success Program for at-risk students. We've helped build a sense of community with San Clemente residents and staff, as is suggested by the, our efforts of the Hate Crime Victim Support Network, by the 24 parents who completed our parent leadership training, by the combined efforts of OC Human Relations and San Clemente staffs who worked to support the San Clemente Collaborative, including four collaborative meetings, and certainly by the 60 residents, six organizational leaders, two human affair members, who participated in the multi-generational, generational project, El Bahio de San Clemente, that culminated in an art exhibition program in celebration at our Lady of Fatima. It is, by the way, highlighted on page seven of the, of the report that you have. And in that context, I want to give, send out a heartfelt thanks to the city, to its leadership, to its staff, to residents, for a successful project and for a wonderful evening, and a special note of thanks to council members Baker and Doncheck, and to staff member, Ms. Denise Obrero. In conclusion, as we begin the 21st year of OC Human Relations partnership with OC cities, it's notable, I think, to recognize that in addition to these specific services that we provide here in San Clemente, we've also worked to maintain the capacity of OC Human Relations to assist throughout the county wherever and whenever human relations crises emerge. This year, those efforts were crucial, I think, in providing help to residents who took part in our Listening Sessions program, to help them understand what many African-Americans, Sikhs, and Muslims face in our neighborhoods on a daily basis. Help the cities to rebuild or reforge immigrant community relations in the aftermath of sometimes violent, again, confrontations. Help and assistance to Orange County cities as they attempted to address the needs, again, for, or seek the creation of permanent supportive housing for mentally ill and multi-service homeless shelters to reduce the number of people living on the streets. Assistance to city councils to maintain civility in public meetings while balancing free speech rights of individuals on the one hand, and the desire to keep hate-free zones for diverse members of the public on the other. While cities may not have major conflicts every year, when those conflicts do arise, they can be enormously expensive to address in terms of public safety, human suffering, and compromised reputations. Our experience indicates that serious damage can be averted, and significant savings can be achieved if one has a strong human relations organization with significant capacity. I humbly submit to you that OC Human Relations is that kind of organization. And now finally, if the mayor would, again, indulge us and come forward, we'd like to make a presentation at this time to honor the city, its leadership, its staff, its residents, for the wonderful support for good human relations in 2012 and 2013, by making this presentation of a certificate of recognition.
So for the City of San Clemente, for its outstanding commitment to fostering mutual understanding among residents and eliminating prejudice, intolerance, and discrimination, in order to make Orange County a better place for all people to live, work, and do business, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
We're very proud of our association, very, very grateful, and I, I want to apologize. Ms. Baker, you have been so gracious and generous and accommodating for years, and I, I fail to thank you every year, and I'm...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. I appreciate it.
And next is a presentation of commendation to Lieutenant John Koppick.
Now, this happens to be one of those happy-sad moments that you have as a, for the City of San Clemente, we are pleased to, Captain, pardon me, wow, I almost made the mistake...
Not until Friday.
Not until Friday? Or the lieutenant, uh, you know, so passe, but he'd be taking, be leaving us, and has been promoted, and I guess we should expect this day to come, because you really have been just wonderful for our city. And so it was only a matter of time, but will be leaving us to assume the rank of captain with the Sheriff's Department, and so we, and so it's starting on Friday, that is the day when you'd be departing us.
Friday.
And so we need to spike up the crime as much as possible before he leaves, so that he can't get... Hold on, did I just say that? Hold on one second, hold on, wait, I take that back.
Jim's quoting you right now, by the way. You run that down.
So, but I would like to read this, because I think it's very well-written, and it also encapses a lot of what, you know, my fellow members on council have to say in this, in this proclamation and commendation for Lieutenant Koppick. "Whereas John Koppick began his career with the City of San Clemente Police Department on July 30th, 1986, when he was appointed the position of a police officer. And whereas John Koppick transitioned to the Orange County Sheriff's Program in 1993, when the city contracted with the county for law enforcement services. And whereas, because of his outstanding performance, John Koppick steadily rose through the ranks of police service, serving in such areas as criminal street gang enforcement, narcotics investigations and arrests, secondary commander of SWAT activities, responsibility for 3,000 high-risk inmates, as watch commander at the Theo Lacy Facility, as well as covert surveillance and undercover work. And whereas, in recognition of his superior professionalism leadership, John Koppick was promoted to the rank of lieutenant in April 2011, and commenced his service as chief of police services for the City of San Clemente on March 23rd, 2012. And whereas Chief Koppick served the City of San Clemente with honor distinction, successfully implementing a citizen academy that teaches members of the community about various areas of Orange County Sheriff's Department. And whereas Chief Koppick will leave his position of chief of police services on March 20th to assume the position of captain with the Orange County Sheriff's Department. Now, therefore, I, Tim Brown, Mayor of San Clemente, acting on behalf of the City Council and the cities, citizens of San Clemente, do hereby commend and thank John Koppick for his exemplary service to the people of San Clemente, and do furthermore wish him continued success and prosperity and is a new phase of his professional career." Thank you, John. Now, he's armed, and when he says, "Sit down," you should sit down. We have to respect that. Yeah, that's a great idea. This is, this is gonna be wonderful therapy for us.
You wanna keep your white shoes out of the picture?
No, I'm just trying to get some hide there. Here, it's for you. Well, I know, Jim's, Jim's gotta get artsy, right, Jim?
I'm gonna have to speak?
Yes, you have to speak.
I wasn't prepared, I only get three minutes. No, just, um, as I've told many of you, this, this promotion is definitely bittersweet for me, and I consider the past two years working here in San Clemente among the best of my career, and it's due in large part to, to folks like you and to the people of San Clemente. I, I tell you, San Clemente, I grew up in this town, and I worked here many years ago, and I was gone for 18 years, working in other places, and then when I came back, it was, it was like I had never left, and, and it really reminded me of what San Clemente's all about. So it's been my honor to serve here, and to serve on behalf of the Sheriff's Department here in San Clemente. I tell you, though, I'm leaving you in good hands. The city has just named a replacement for me, and I won't steal your thunder, but he's a good man, and he will continue in the tradition of the chiefs before him and also in me. And I can tell you, San Clemente is extremely fortunate. You folks might not realize it, but you have a group of the finest deputy sheriffs that Orange County has got for working here in your community, so you can sleep well at night. So thank you very much for this. This is a great honor for me. Thank you.
Now, we do have a card on this item. Wayne Aggleston has asked to speak regarding this agendized item.
Lieutenant, on behalf of the Marine Monument at Park Semper Fi, we, I really want to thank you for keeping it safe and secure throughout these years. Really appreciate it, and your deputies did a great job, and I'd like to present you with this photo, which is a photograph by Christie McBride. It's one of the most wonderful photographs of Park Semper Fi, and so I really wanted to thank you for this, and good luck in your new assignment.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There you go.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Wayne, how many of his phone calls did he have to answer at 10:00 PM to deserve that photo?
Good luck, John.
Presentation by Sharon Hyder, Director of Beaches, Parks, and Recreation, concerning the status of the Courtney Sandcastle Project.
Good evening, also with me tonight is Erin Donnelly, our park planner, who's been working tirelessly on trying to figure out how to get this little park finished. As you know, this is the last piece of Courtney Sandcastle. This park is a really special park in that it is designed for people of all ages and abilities and needs. It is designed for children with special needs. It's also designed for parents who may have some disability, to be able to come play with their children. This last piece is the Century Garden, which is probably more for some of the more mature kids and adults, that we don't really have a great location for presently in the community. Last time I was before you, we talked about the challenge that we've had getting good numbers in to bid this project. We bid it two times previously, and unfortunately, it seems like the construction market is working decidedly against us, in that we created bids, a building project that we thought would get a decent bid, and you may remember, last time, it came in almost twice the amount. So we came to you, and we asked you to allow us to work with Courtney Sandcastle Foundation to redesign this, do some value engineering, and to be able to rebid it. We're back with you with the results of that. We have been fortunate in the community that a number of contractors have helped us with this. We've asked questions, they've given us good suggestions on how we might redesign this to be able to bring the cost down, but really keep the play factor and the Century Garden elements together. So the plan that you see up on the wall there, it's really very much what you're used to seeing. Probably the most significant thing is the walkway that works its way up the hill to the Century Garden Plaza. We've removed the walls that have happened, that were, used to happen on both sides of that. Walls were very expensive in retaining conditions, and we did that by regrading the design to make it more softened articulated slopes that we could plant. We've also used angular features to reduce the complexity of the forming for concrete. And we are fortunate that when we did the pier bowl lighting project and pavers, we pulled out a number of pavers, and we have had those in storage. So what we're going to do is we're going to use those pavers for this project to sort of repurpose those. We've also shifted the play area a little, or the shaded, I would call it a lecture area, a little bit. It is the, the item that you see sort of in the upper left-hand side with the dots on it. That is a shaded area where people could come with a group of children, have interpretive things, or have lectures. And the reason that we moved that a little further out is because of the existing shade structure has become so popular with parties and active activities. We thought that it might be more difficult to have teaching moments with so many birthday parties and things going on. So we worked with Courtney Sandcastle Foundation, they've been excellent in helping us figure out what were the core elements that we needed to keep, and what could we move away from. So what we have now is a result of lots of work with landscape architects. Erin has worked hard on it, getting different cost estimates from a number of different contractors in the field. We are ready to go out, and we will be advertising this Friday. It will be about a four-week process. April 1st, we'll have a mandatory walkthrough, and our bid opening will be April 16th. Between now and then, we've contacted about 35 different contractors that have showed some interest in the past, and basically, we're contacting them... some interest in the past, and basically, we're contacting them, asking them to please pay attention to this project, and sort of imploring them to maybe reach their heartstrings that, you know, if there is someone out there who has been, you know, touched by a child with special needs, maybe this is the project that you need to come in and give us a really great number on. Maybe there's something important about this project. Because it's amazing that a group of individuals have worked 12 years raising money for this, and we are trying our darndest to get it constructed. So, the update is that we have value engineered it. I hope you will see that it has all the play elements that are still important. We pulled out some walls. We've pulled out some hardscape elements, but we still think it will be a very fine project. And so we are beating the bushes for that great contractor who will come in and give us a really fair price and let us finish the last piece of this puzzle. And I'm happy to answer questions if you might have them.
Sharon, would you mind emailing the City Council this slide here, plus a couple, a little recap that we could send to some friends that are in the construction business that might be interested in something like this? A one-page recap or something like that of what they'd be looking at, so to see if it piqued their interest or something like that.
They'd be looking at being part of an award, statewide award-winning project.
And wouldn't that be wonderful if we could forward that and have some local contractor step up and do this in the community? I think that's, you know, if we can get some local contractors involved in this, I think it'd be a wonderful thing, and something they could hang their hat on for many, many, many years. So, if you do that, I'll send that to a couple of guys I've got in mind.
And to further Bob's great idea, Jim, Fred, when you guys do your articles on this meeting, that's a thought.
Thank you, Sharon. Really appreciate that.
Members of the audience who wish to address counsel on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the City of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation. And we are having some electrical problems with our timer, so we'll be calling time when three minutes is over. Thank you, though.
Okay, first we have Kim Yim. Following Kim is Sam Olstead.
Good. Finally made it on a Tuesday night. My name is Kim Yim, and I am one of the founders of the San Clemente Abolitionists, a local group of women and men, but mostly women. We started as a group of women, working to raise a level of understanding and engagement on the global problem of human trafficking and modern-day slavery. Since 2010, was, we hosted our first event down at the casino where Jim Everett came, and this was before Tim Brown was elected, but he also was in attendance, and we invited the entire City Council to our very first event on 2010. Since then, we have done, since 2010, we've had a variety, we've hosted a variety of events, mostly out of the Cellar, the wine and cheese bar on Del Mar, where we have highlighted issues such as slavery in the production of cocoa, to child soldiers in the Congo, to child sex trafficking here in the U.S. We've also hosted events on Prop 35, which, as you know, passed unanimously with over an 81% here in California. As a result, in part, as a result of our efforts, I wrote a book released last year called, "Refuse to Do Nothing: Finding Your Power to Abolish Modern Day Slavery," as you can see here. Recently, it has come to our attention, a particular concern of ours, of sex trafficking, and particularly here in San Clemente. Although we have highlighted all different kinds of types of slavery that exist in our world, this particular concern of sex trafficking in San Clemente and its impact on our community. It was brought to our attention, the website rubmap.com, www.rubmap.com, which confirms our assumptions. We know we have a problem of sex trafficking here in San Clemente, and we know we must begin to work together in ending sex slavery in our backyard. These local operations operate as commercial front brothels that claim to offer legal services such as massage, but they actually provide commercial sex. The victims are most often women, and in times, young girls, both documented and undocumented. These brothels frequently operate in strip malls, office buildings, and sometimes in residential homes, in urban, suburban, and rural areas across all 50 states here in the United States. These fake massage businesses is what we see on rubmap.com. You can go on those websites, you can type in our zip code, and eight of those locations will come up. Those are really easily accessible. It doesn't take us any investigative. It was brought to our attention and has been affirmed by, even just recently, I think it was the last week, the Orange County Chief of Police just did a press release on this particular subject, on the problem of sex trafficking in Orange County, specifically massage parlors. So you can check that website. I suggest you don't go any further than that initial observation. But we are really encouraged by the efforts of the Orange County Sheriff's Department. I had the opportunity to meet soon-to-be Captain Koppick at the Coffee with the Cops. And we're definitely encouraged. Our final thought, we're dancing for, in, for the Orange, the San Clemente Rotary's Dancing for a Cause event, and we're going to be dancing for the organization Saving Innocence, which provides services for child sex trafficking victims here in Southern California. So buy your tickets for Dancing for a Cause. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Kim. Next is Sam Olstead. Following Sam is Sandy Exelby.
That was a hard one to follow up. My name is Sam Olstead, and I'm with the San Clemente Community Market. We are a grassroots organization that is bringing a full-service cooperative grocery store here to Orange County in San Clemente. Four years in the making, we started out in the art supply, San Clemente Art Supply, meeting with a group of people, and what we found was there was a common thread that everyone is pretty much discontent with the current grocery environment that we had in the city, with the produce and products that they were serving. What we did find was that our constituents, our group, was very, was looking for local organic food, foods out of San Diego County, foods with less packaging, affordable whole foods. And for that, instead of complaining and commiserating, we decided to do something about it. And what we did was, we created a founding committee, and we did a research team, and we found that there is a new cooperative business model out there that would be very supportive of our efforts. Three years later, we ended up becoming incorporated in California as a California corporation under their cooperative laws, and we started taking money from prospective shareholders in our cooperative. We are currently up to 117 families that have become members. We are totally member-driven. We are a cooperative whereby we're democratically run. Board of directors are voted for, and they have alternating terms, just like the City Council, and they represent our members and drive the process. We are fully voluntary, and this is a side job. All of us have regular jobs, but we have been keeping this progress going for the past four years. Our next landmark is going to be, or milestone is 300 members, and at that point, we will be doing feasibility studies at different locations around the town to project out sales numbers for the cooperative. What we're envisioning is a full-service grocery store, 4,000 to 8,000 square foot. It'll be professionally run, professionally staffed, and the board of directors will hire a general manager, which will run the store, under the direction of our membership and the policies and procedures. For that, we are having an open house April 5th down on Caie Vieja, it's 1506 Caie Vieja. So it's going to be April 5th. It's a Saturday at 9:00 AM. I highly encourage you and the public to come in. We're going to have, our board of directors will be there, and volunteers, and we'll describe the project, what's going on, much more in detail, and what we envision. So, if there's any questions, I can answer questions. If not, hopefully I'll see you on the 5th.
Sam, I have a question. I'm very interested in becoming a member, so how would I do that?
You can go to the website, www.sanclementemarket.com, or you can come to one of our meetings. We have a board meeting the third Tuesday of every month at 6:00 PM.
And is there a PayPal kind of a thing on your website?
There is a PayPal, and there's different options for becoming a shareholder.
I think this is a really terrific initiative for our city. Great. Thank you. I'm going to try to come to the open house.
It's a great little market, if you haven't been there before.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Sam. Next is Sandy. Following Sandy is Wayne Aggleston.
I'm a member. I should say too, someone said it's a great market. They're not, they're not selling food right now, so.
I've been in there when they did have food, and they had artists and...
Sam should be answering the question.
Yeah. No, I, you know.
My name is Sandy Exelby, and I've lived in San Clemente since 1975. Here in San Clemente, we hear and read about the closure of the San Onofre Nuclear Plant, but we don't hear much about how to address the loss of power, except maybe in trying to recoup the cost to ratepayers. That's an important issue. At an annual meeting several years ago, local members of the League of Women Voters were privileged to hear Devin Hartman present many important facts about energy and a Claremont Conservation Project he co-founded. One day, about a year later, I, as the energy chair of our local league, received an invitation from Devin to a celebration. The many community partners of Claremont Home Energy Retrofit Project, which is CHERP, C-H-E-R-P, you can Google that, chirp, Claremont, were planning a party to celebrate energy retrofits on 1% of the total residential housing which they now have exceeded. I was amazed to see a large hall completely filled with people and tables around the room, representing the city, Southern California Edison, owners of home retrofits, and the workers who are trained by architects and builders. Other partners included the Garden Club, the Historical Preservation Group, churches, the Claremont League of Women Voters, Sustainable Claremont, the Sierra Club, green building businesses, and philanthropic groups. Speakers included Governor Brown's energy advisor, the mayor of the city, and others from Sacramento, but I can't remember who they were. I was so impressed to see what a community could do to make homes more comfortable and efficient and earth-friendly. After discovering in our city's general plan the very guidelines used in Claremont, I wanted to bring this story to our community, and I'm very pleased that Devin Hartman has agreed to speak at our April 26th meeting. It's at the Dana Point Library, and it's at 10:30 in the morning. That's a Saturday. We hope the city will be among the community groups invited. I know we have a representative from SDG&E coming, and Lori's coming, and I bent her ear after I went to that celebration because I was so excited. Did you know that U.S. buildings consume 46, 48% of total energy used and produce 44% of carbon dioxide emissions? That's three minutes. Well, I have, I have that report, and then I have the speakers, a little bit about his bio that you could read about, because he really has great expertise. Thank you very much.
Next is Wayne Aggleston. Following Wayne is Charles Mansour. Oh, first Wayne.
I heard that. I heard that. A week from this Thursday at 6:30 at the San Clemente Community Center, the All-American Boys Choir will be performing their internationally acclaimed chorus, and they'll be presenting patriotic and entertaining music in celebration of America. It's free admission to military and veterans, and other adults are $10; children under 12 are $5. All the proceeds benefit the South Coast Marine Corps League, which of course is a cosponsor of 2nd Battalion 4th Marines, and also HMLA 469. So it's a very worthy cause to be contributing to. So I urge everyone to come. It's a week from this Thursday at 6:30 at the Community Center. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. I'm excited about that. I know a few members of the choir, and they're just, it's a tremendous group. They're going to be really successful, so.
All right, can you bring that last one back up? Can you give us one second, sir? I noticed that all the items you've been bringing up tonight haven't been in full screen mode. There's no way to do it? Okay.
Next is Charles Mansour.
I'm Charles Mansour, and I'm a Realtor. My wife and I own a couple of homes in Talega, and we manage about six of them. And last week, I got a call about we're having a war here. And Talega is no longer the Talega that I've remembered, and I didn't know what he was talking about, but I guess the Marines have basically been bombarding this side of town a lot. And I'm here to ask for help. Is there any way to convince them to shift a little bit, a mile or two, to not to be so loud? Because really, they're being, waking up, woken up in the morning at 6 o'clock with bombs and the whole bit. I'm sure you all heard it. But anyway, that's the only thing I'm here for, and I thank you very much if there's anything you can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mansour, I'll speak to that. We've had a few residents that have come up with the past. You know, we have a pretty strict policy on this, is the base is going to do what they feel in terms of military readiness and preparation for the conflicts which they face. These ranges which they're operating on are actually miles away, but the concussions and the sounds just carry over a long ways. The areas are very well-defined. Movement is frankly not an option we would ever open. And so we've just learned to, every time we hear that sound, we hear somebody defending us, and so we just have to take it in the proper context.
I accept that. I mean, I appreciate that. It doesn't bother me that much. I mean, I was born and raised in a war zone, so this is very minor. But the reality is just that it's much louder than I've ever heard it. And this morning, I came to see for myself, because I do remember some kind of like far-away thunder, but this one wasn't far-away thunder. This was right in our backyard. It felt like it.
It can be cyclical and seasonal. Sometimes it's bad, sometimes it's good. But at the end of the day, we don't really ever impose whatever standards we have on them, so we do appreciate your viewpoint, though.
Thank you.
If you'd like to share your view, Mr. Mansour, directly with the base, the city clerk can give you the name and contact information for Larry Reynolds.
I did call him.
Okay, because he's our community liaison.
They're going to do what they're going to do.
That's what the mayor said, I think, yeah. And we have been in contact with him. There has been a little bit of noise, but it's the standard, as you mentioned.
I remember a few years back, they had, they did a simulated IED explosion, and that was amazing how far that carried. People in Laguna Beach were calling on that one, so it can be, it can be difficult, but it's just all in the proper context. Next, Brenda Miller. And following Brenda is Don Slater.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to remind you that there are 18 days, 13 hours, and 57 minutes left until the April 6th, Seaclavia in Los Angeles. That tour is going to be the iconic Wilshire Boulevard route. I've never personally done this one, but it's right down the financial district. The next one after that is not until October. The next one following is December the 7th. So it is Sunday, April the 6th. You can join me and Foxy and take MetroLink all the way to LA and have a wonderful, wonderful time. They close the streets to cars. Where there are car crossings, they're fully regulated by LAPD, men in blue, men and women in blue. Some of them are on bikes themselves. It's a great event, and it's a great way to be gridlocked in heaven, from my perspective. So if any of you want to contact Pete Van Nuys to rent bikes, I'm sure Pete will be very amenable to making sure bikes are available before the train departs on Sunday. So if you have any questions, you know how to find me. It's really a great event. There's so many people, and everybody smiles.
What is the cost for the MetroLink that day?
If it is the typical, I would suggest just buy your weekend pass, which is $10 unlimited. Anywhere, all-day-long Saturday is $10, and all-day-long Sunday is $10. You get on MetroLink and all-connecting buses wherever MetroLink goes. You can go all the way to Landca... You can go all the way to Lancaster. You can go all the way to Riverside. You can go all the way to Ventura for a $10 round trip unlimited. It's a great deal. So, and it's, in my opinion, it's better than Disneyland, but that just shows my age. So it's a great experience. So any of you want to come along and join me, I'm always grabbing people to go, so.
Do they check Foxy's papers before she gets on the train?
She's fully licensed.
Okay.
So, but they love her. She's like the unofficial mascot of MetroLink anyway, so let me know if you'd like some assistance planning your route, so.
Thanks, P. Miller. Next is Don Slater.
Hello. Congratulations, Mayor Brown. Hadn't had a chance to congratulate you. I want to start off by thanking Lori, Councilwoman Lori Doncheck, for having got the sand north beach a while ago. And I know that you took a lot of guff about the quality of the sand, but it is all the sand we have left. If you go, that's all that's there now, except for what washes up and washes away every day. So thank you very much, and it's better to have that than nothing, which is where we would be at. So also, I want to urge the rest of the City Council to think about bringing in more sand. I think the permits are still open for finding sand and bringing it in. And if that's so, if you take a look at what's happened, unless you want Kahuna's to be a reef for divers, you might want to have a look at that because it's already washing underneath. On another point, I'm very saddened about what happened with the parking fund money. I certainly hope that you will consider going forward with the parking lot in North Beach on El Camino Real. It's going to be a very important element in North Beach and provide a tremendous amount of parking and area for people to enjoy. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate your time.
Okay. Could we have a motion to waive reading of all resolutions and ordinances?
So moved. Motion by Hamm, second by Baker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Close session report, City Attorney.
There's nothing to report out.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. I have not received any requests for removal from either staff or the public.
Okay. Starting with Jim, anything? Chris, anything? Lori, anything? Bob?
Yeah, I got 6B1 and 2, and Item H.
Okay. I have Item A, D, and E for my part.
Remove the balance.
Second.
Motion by Doncheck, second by Hamm. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tossed.
Passes 5-0. Let's start with Item A. I believe that's...
On page 6B1...
Actually, I'm going to do A.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about comment here.
Sorry.
Actually, it was regarding sand replenishment. There's a comment that I've had, a few people have called me for clarifications on 6A-8. 6A-8, and it's the council minutes from our, from our meeting that we had on the 25th of February. This is regarding sand replenishment. And I'd just like to, Joanne, if I could, just have the record reflect just a condition statement here. Want to make sure. Right now it reads, "The city should consider placing a measure on the ballot to ask voters if they wish to tax themselves for sand replenishment." Now although it doesn't delineate, since I was the one who was saying it, I kind of want to make sure that it's accurate. I'd just like to see added to that, if the project is approved by the necessary agencies, and if the other agencies participate, and if the first sand project is considered successful, then the city should consider.
I don't think you can amend minutes that way if you didn't say it, right?
The minutes are really supposed to be a reflection of what was actually done at the meeting?
I'm pretty sure that that would be a reflection if the meetings were to revisit the actual deliberation. I want to have the conditional statements in there because it's important that there was a whole series of conditional items that were supposed to happen before we actually took it to any type of valid initiative. I just want to make sure that that's accurately reflected in the record. So if maybe we can revisit the minutes, would that be appropriate?
Well, the only problem is we don't get a tape when the meetings are off-site.
We didn't tape that one with the microphone?
They don't come out very well at all, so when they're off-site. So there's really nothing for me to check, but if, is the council members' recollection that that, was that their understanding?
That was my recollection. It was on the basis.
My recollection is that we covered items like that when I couldn't talk.
Can you just maybe say something as the issue moves forward, the city might consider? Or something like that?
I'm okay with it.
Soften it that way?
I'd like to make sure that, because we really don't, I don't want to ask the voters to take an initiative on this. That's not what we want from this. Yeah, there was a whole series of conditions ahead of it. If it's approved, if we can get the funding, and if it's successful.
Okay.
Then we would ask the voters to contemplate a tax at that point.
Okay.
Before we move aside, I have another point on this that you just pointed out and didn't catch.
Okay. Anyway, that was the only thing I wanted to reflect. Perhaps if we revisit your notes, there might be a way of saying that that would be useful.
You just brought up a point in that I didn't catch anywhere when I was reading through it before, but on 6A9, in terms of the 800 megahertz radio system for the Sheriff's Department, number 3 at the bottom, it says, "Direct Lieutenant Kopic to confirm the number of city radios proposed." And I think we discussed, Councilmember Baker, that we would review whether or not we would assign each individual deputy a radio, not confirm if the number was correct. Isn't that the discussion we had? Yes. So here it just says he's going to confirm the number. Well, if I was him, I would confirm the number and we would just go forward, but I think we directed to look into ensuring that we're not allotting a radio per deputy. We're allotting a radio per position with enough access in case some are disabled.
And I think it was provide a point of view, you know, come back and tell us.
I remember that.
Okay. Perfect.
Those are the only two items, and I believe, am I the only one that had any, Chris and I are the only things on that? Okay. Think we're clear on that? Does that seem, okay.
I can get it.
With that, I'll move the item. Motion by Brown, second by Hamm. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Next item is B1 and 2.
B1, these are the minutes of the zoning administrator meeting. I just want to point out, I want to thank Mr. Holloway for doing some great stuff here, Mr. Holloway. I just want to read this to everybody. Mr. Holloway stated, "The city does not control the signage on the sides of trucks. In the San Joaquin Valley, you see non-tractable trailers with signs on them that look like billboards even though technically they are trailers." "This city has had that problem with stepmans and panel trucks on a smaller scale. There's advertising on the side of a panel truck that would park next to the business that looks like a giant sign." He asked staff if there is a condition of approval which addresses this. Mr. Holloway raised a very important point that needs to be addressed, and I just, I just want to congratulate you for that, Jim, and for your attention to that detail. And please keep it up because that's a, that's an important point to consider as these large projects make their way through the commission. So thank you for that. I just wanted to point that out, that Mr. Holloway is on that. So with that, I'll move 6B1.
If I could also just address one other item on that. You know, the idea of the visual simulations for Buildings 21 and 22, were there renderings provided on these buildings from original that had been amended, and that's why these visual simulations were completed? Or were these original items specific to this plan? Do you remember? Because it doesn't feel like we have any updated renderings to this project that would indicate, you know, anything that's changed here. I just wondered if we had that available.
Oh, Jim's here. Good.
This has to do with the plan check that we're going through, the very detailed plan check we're going through for the Marblehead Commercial Center. And one of the principles that we've held to for years now is that, there's, to answer your, so that's what it's about. And when it goes to the discretionary process, what the council sees are the elevations. There are some renderings, but what we check the construction documents to are the actual elevations which you can dimension. So we do have, we have renderings, but they're not as valuable at this point in the process as the elevations that were presented to the council and the Planning Commission and the Design Review Subcommittee. So yes, we have those, and we are checking the construction documents against those approved elevations. And there's always a little bit of change when you go from discretionary to a building permit, but all the elevations, heights, of scale, et cetera, is less than or equal to what was approved by the City Council.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Sorry. So we had original motion on the table, moved by Baker, second by Doncheck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you, Jim.
6B2-8.
Now, I have a question about this, and I'm glad Bob pulled it because there's actually two items in this. I live within 500 feet of this, and so do I need to recuse myself as we're contemplating this item on consent calendar? Well, and so here's, here's the question. So it's on consent calendar, but it got pulled. So because it's been pulled, do I need to recuse myself? And if it's not pulled, is it just a matter of course? And it's, so I'm looking for direction on that.
The, you within 500 feet of the property that's involved in the zoning administrator action?
The CUP for Care for Yorga?
No, this is the zoning permit streamlining, isn't it?
No, this is zoning permit streamlined.
I guess it's 6B was pulled, 6B2, so is the entire thing pulled, or what happened?
You're fine talking about the zoning, certainly fine talking about the first item that does not involve your property. Let me look at the second item, and I'll get back in just a sec.
Okay. So I don't really have anything to discuss about that. I just want to make sure that I, if you opened it, that I could talk about the first item. Sorry, Bob. Go ahead.
These are the minutes of the study session for the Planning Commission, and this is for zoning permit streamlining. And there is, you know, we're all in favor of streamlining the zoning permit process. We've had many, many discussions here talking about that very thing. I just want to read part of this to everybody so that we're on board and understand what's coming down. Comment that it's important to consider, these are, these are words from the various commissioners, and either individually or in agreement, provided the following commentary. Comment that it's important to consider when making code or policy changes, the quality of life is maintained in the city. The existing process and the regulations currently in place have led to a great quality of life in the city, and code changes should not diminish it. Instead, the goal should be to preserve, protect, and improve quality of life further while providing quality customer service. While we're doing these, streamlining of the permit process, I would encourage us all to keep that very fact in our minds, that this process has given us a fabulous place to live. So let's not be too, too hasty in what we're going to do to streamline the process, because the process as it currently works has served us not perfectly, but certainly very well. So just wanted to make that point, so that we're all thinking about that when it comes before us. That's it. With that, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion by Baker, second by Doncheck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sounds good. Next item is Item D, which is the resolution, which is calls for implementing conservation measures in response to 2014 drought conditions, calling for a voluntary reduction in water usage. The reason, hey, how are you? Good. The reason why I brought this up, Andrew, is because I wanted to, we're asking the residents to, to look at voluntary 20% conservation. And so I just wanted to highlight how the city as an entity is also going to start implementing measures to try and also find a way to do 20% water conservation. That's something in the plan and the works. Sure. And what we're doing so that the residents can be confident that we're also looking to do so.
Right, exactly. So one of the largest things that we're doing right now is our recycled water expansion. Once that's complete, our parks will be the first customers onto recycled water. And that's the biggest sort of baiting for our buck in the largest area that we can conserve water. We've also been speaking with, our department's been speaking with Parks, Beaches, Parks and Rec to begin discussing areas where we can remove non-functional turf. As you know, turf grass is the highest water-using item that there is, really. And we've also removed some turf grass right by our utilities building that just doesn't get used. We were just actually talking about removing another 3,000 square feet of turf grass, which is right by our reclamation plant that doesn't get used for anything. So there are a lot of things that we're doing. And any recommendations as well? If you guys can think of some things, and we're always open to that. And one of the things that I do want to recommend to citizens is if they see a city irrigation that might be broken or fixing, since it tends to happen after hours, if they can call us and let us know, since we're not always around, if they call us and let us know, then we can address those a lot quicker than we normally would. So we welcome that.
Andrew, Chris? What are you replacing the turf with that you're removing?
We, we haven't decided what we're going to replace it with yet. We've decided on an area that we're going to remove, but we want to keep it beautiful, not, not just do things that are ugly or desert-like. We are in a Mediterranean climate, so we can have some Mediterranean-type vegetation.
Andrew, I've got a couple of questions. First off, when is the recycled water completion date?
I don't know the exact date.
There's Mr. Recycled Water himself coming forward?
There's something on his chin.
It's a growth. Mr. Mayor, remember the cows? It needs a shave. Our recycle water project, our pipelines and reservoir construction will be complete at the end of this month, beginning of next month. And then the last phase of work is the recycle water treatment plant. That'll be done September, early October, so we should be ready to feed customers right around late September, 1st of October.
Okay. While we got you up here, I have a question in regards to the lot at the corner of Lapada and Vista Hermosa, where we're storing some of the soils that's being removed for that project?
Correct.
Is there a limit on the amount of time that they can operate, or the hours of operation for that location? Because I've been getting complaints from residents they've been operating past 10 o'clock.
That is late. Thank you for bringing that up. No, there is time limits, so we will talk to the contractor about that. I don't know exactly what they are, but we certainly don't want them in after hours at the location. Once the project's done, too, they'll clean up that site and remove the fencing, so that's coming up soon.
I got one more thing for Andrew. I would, I would recommend that somebody go and take a look at the sprinklers that are watering Esplanade, the, the center median on Esplanade, because there's an awful lot of water that gets sprayed into the street there.
Sure.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be, that would be on my list of places to start.
Definitely, yeah.
Thank you.
Now, Andrew, who do we call if we see those, what's the number we call if we see any problems with sprinklers or watering?
I'm one of the people that you can call, so my number is 949-361-8354. You can also call Stormwater and also Beaches, Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Andrew.
So any one of those three.
Appreciate it. This would be a very valuable effort. Thank you. Okay. With that, I'll move the item. Motion by Brown, second by Baker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Eric, how are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Good. I've got a question about the communication site E, excuse me, Item E, which is the site facility lease agreements for Magnalena and Salvador.
Yes.
Could you just give a little background on exactly what's going on with this and what we're benefiting from it?
Absolutely. So we have two agreements that are set to expire in two years. Currently, we get about 12,000, excuse me, we get about 24,000 a year from each agreement through revenue on a monthly basis. The company, the company has approached us saying, "Would you go ahead and for $8,000 each, allow us to do an extension to that agreement now rather than waiting until it comes up in two years?" So tonight, before you, the council, we're giving the recommendation that we'd like to go ahead and extend it for an additional 20 years and take the additional, it's 16,000 total in kind of the renewal cost, and continue with that same revenue stream that currently exists on a monthly basis. So that's, in a nutshell, it's kind of the gist.
Chris, real quick, you said 24,000 per site or 24,000 total?
24,000 per site. I'm looking at Tom Rendina to make sure. Tom? 24,000 in revenue per site. Correct.
What's our time sensitivity on this?
You know, one of the things, you have time. You know, one of the things, you have time. Absolutely have time. Typically, when we get close to an expiration, we typically sit back down with the vendor to see if they want to renew. And we typically don't get this renewal cost at that time. However, that's still two years away. So, if council wanted to provide some direction and some parameters for us to go back, completely open to that.
You know, I'm not quite sure if... It seems like this would be a market rate. Generally speaking, I'd like to be a little more confident as to if this is competitive with the current environment. Also, it's important to remember that on telecom lease terms, it's usually not mutual termination rights. So, we are obliged to provide a location, but they can terminate at any time, even with the extended lease terms. And so, frankly, a lot of the times when you're evaluating these contracts, it's important to keep that in mind. I would like to just take maybe an extra 30 to 60 days to take a look at these sites and perhaps with staff, and just evaluate and see what the long-term lease obligation is and the benefit of us renewing now as opposed to in the future. Give my preference.
If we're going to go that route, I'd also like to have somebody take a look at the COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment, because the 3% over 20 years seem very favorable for the...
For the carrier?
For the carrier, thank you.
Actually, 3% is fairly aggressive nowadays.
Over 20 years, though, do you think?
Well, it's 3% annually.
Right.
3% annually over 20 years, it actually trends above CPI.
I guess what I was thinking is 20-year technology could do a complete sea change in that time.
That works for and against, because it can be sea change, meaning the technology is invalidated and they can terminate the site and we lose 2,000 a month in rent. So, it blends both ways. But I'd like to...
So, you're not troubled with the COLA?
3% is usually a very good rate, frankly, on these. But I'm more want to understand the renewal rate and how we're doing that. So, if that's okay with the council, I'd like to be able to sit down with staff and just go over, understand a little bit more about the lease agreement. And if we do do this, then what we would want, perhaps at the end of this, is some type of extended term guarantee, you know, that if there was a termination action, that we would get some guarantee of rent.
The other thought is, my recollection is that we have a policy and we have an approach and we're very even-handed with all of our sites. So, as you go down that path, just make sure that the conversation is sensitive to the fact that it's not an isolated lease.
Absolutely. When you're coming up on all of these here, I believe in equitable treatment. You know, this is... Most of us look as wireless communications. I believe as wireless communications, a public service at this point. Everyone has to have it. It's important for public safety, and I've affirmed that in my actions. I do want to make sure that on these renewals, that if there's an incentive to move forward, that we're being protected on our end in case of an early termination action that could terminate two years out and we could lose a lot of revenue. And so, just want to ensure that if we're doing some proactive action, we're also getting some return on that, you know, on that renewal ahead of time. So... And frankly, I looked at the contract. It looks like it's really well set up. I don't see there being much in terms of changes, but I did want to make sure that, you know, that we're... That the contract lines up well with what the marketplace is doing.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any concern with... On this, would it be tabling it? Jeff, what would be asking for then?
If you're talking about 30 days or something like that, we could continue this to a date certain. Or if you want to table it and bring it up at some point when staff feels comfortable bringing it back, then you can table it. Either way, it'll come back to you. Just depends upon whether you want...
Prefer to table it at this juncture as opposed to make a date certain? Yeah.
The will of the council, I can table it for 30 days, date certain, or we can just table it and brief council members and then bring it back.
Let's table it.
Okay.
Let's table it, and then we'll bring it back at any point. So, that's my motion. I'd like to move that we table this, and then we'll bring it back. Motion by Brown, second by Doncheck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is five zero.
Quick question, just so staff knows. Is the intent that staff brings it back when it's ready to bring it back, or is the intent that you'll ask staff to bring it back?
The intent is that staff will bring it back when it's ready.
Correct. Thank you.
I think that's it on all the items. Oh, do we have H, too? Who pulled H? Oh, did you pull that? I'm sorry, I didn't make that note. Item H.
Are you upset about the $2 bump?
You're darn right, by golly. Mr. Nelson, how are you?
Good, thank you, sir. Do you have any specific questions? I'm Gus Nelson, golf course manager.
I do have some... I do have some specific questions.
Fire away.
This increase is going to provide, according to your staff report, an extra $120,000 a year. I've had some questions... Some golfers have asked me, well, where's that $120,000 going to go, Bob? And I said, well, I know just the guy to ask. So, I'm asking you where that extra $120,000 is going to go.
Okay. That's a pretty easy question. It's going to go to a lot of places. The first thing it's going to begin to address is the deficit that we ran in fiscal year 11-12 when the restaurant failed. We... I believe we were approximately $200,000 in the red that year for the golf operation. So, it's going to go towards that. I believe we're required to have 8% of our operating budget in a cash reserve. So, we expended some of that. We'll need to replenish that cash reserve. We will also need to chip away at some of the other things that caused the deficit. The restaurant's doing very well. The new restaurant operator's doing very well. They're exceeding rent revenues. That's factored in. But during this time, one of the things we've done in this current fiscal year to make up for the loss in 11-12 is we made a lot of expenditure cuts, chief among which were the seasonal workers, overtime for the full-time employees, for the weekend work. Basically, that reduced the amount of labor that we had available to us during the week. What we would do is we would have them take a comp time day for the weekend work that they did. Essentially, they would get nine hours off time during the following pay period. So, it reduced... We already have a small staff and without the seasonal labors and with our full-time people, two people per week basically taking a day off just to make up for the weekend work that we did. It significantly reduced the labor available to us in this current fiscal year. So, we are asking to restore all that in the next fiscal year. So, part of this increase will go towards restoring the seasonal labors, May through October, and a partial bring-back of the overtime, also May through October, our busy season.
And I also noticed that you did some very timely airification of not the greens, but the golf course in general, right before our rains there a couple of weeks ago. Was that... Were you lucky on that, or were you really right on on that? Because that was... To me, that was really right on, Gus.
I don't know how it... That was basically the only storm we've gotten thus far this year, and we were kind of desperate. I failed to mention one of the other things that happened last year. It was a very dry year. We spent, I think, about $30,000 more on water than we anticipated in the last fiscal year. And this fiscal year was even drier. And so, some of that money is going towards water costs over the last two years. And then, I think we're anticipating an increase in the rates. I think I was asked to program in 3% for the reclaimed and slightly more for the potable. But yeah, we saw that storm coming. And yes, we... I think we set some other work aside in order to get the entire course aerified, other than the greens, which we were going to do in March, March last week, anyway.
Well, I think it helped tremendously because it just greened up the golf course. Just fabulous. So, that was really... That's a great call. I wanted to commend you on that.
Thank you.
I knew you weren't lucky. I knew you did that on purpose. I just...
Thanks.
But that was really terrific, Gus. So, all the golfers, thank you for that. I just wanted to make it clear to everybody that this golf course money and this increase is not going to fund other city programs. This is staying at the golf course. That's a question I get quite often from golfers.
Yeah, I guess that's the most basic thing that I neglected to mention, is that the golf course is an enterprise fund, and we are required to be financially self-sufficient from the revenue generated at the golf course, which is basically green-free revenue and concession rents for the restaurant and the pro shop lease.
Thanks, Gus.
Thank you, Gus.
With that, I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion by Baker, second by Ham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass is five zero.
Next is a report from the Beaches Parks and Recreation Director concerning the possibility of allowing dogs on leash in all city parks, with the exception of sports fields, play structure areas, and Park Semper Fi special use area.
Bob, I don't know about you, but I was really hoping that fee increase was going to reduce the number of tee times, so I could just walk on any day of the week. That was my goal, but it doesn't sound like that's going to do that, so.
It does not. We are one of the most popular golf courses in all of Orange County and the United States, doing almost double the number of rounds on an average course.
And Bob's responsible for almost 10% of those rounds.
And we thank him. Thank you, Sharon Hyder, Director of Beaches Parks and Recreation. I return to you. We... About a year ago, we did a pilot program where we opened up about half of our parks to dog access. We restricted the access to a number of sports fields and the sports park and Park Semper Fi at that time. You asked us to monitor the situation and come back and give you a report and a recommendation of whether we should open up the other parks. We have been monitoring it. We really have had no complaint, we have... From any of the residents about dog issues. We have noticed that there is an increase in dog waste that our maintenance folks have had to deal with early in the mornings. We continue to have the issue of people do not always pick up. And so, it has not resulted in any additional costs, but it has resulted in a little extra work for the maintenance crews that they've noticed, some additional dog waste. It is not to the... It is not to the point that we think that we would not recommend dog access. People seem to be behaving themselves well. People are in the parks now with their dogs. And so, we were... We would prefer to not criminalize that activity, to sort of recognize the interest in the need in the community and perhaps manage it in a more effective way. So, what we're asking for you tonight is to allow us to remove the restriction on the remaining parks. We would keep the restriction that we have, that dogs are not allowed in the play areas. They would not be allowed on athletic fields, and they would not be allowed in Park Semper Fi. We are asking for a transfer in the budget of 4,500. 3,500 of that would be for some sign removal and sign updating. And then, we're also asking for $1,000 for a one-day event that we would partner with CASA to host a little celebration. Luckily, in my shop, I have the sister of the world champion frisbee dog, who has offered to come out and give a little reduced-cost exhibition. Yes, world-famous frisbee dog. And CASA would be onsite to talk about licensing and vaccines and adoption, and they would bring volunteers to the event. So, that's what the $1,000 is. I know you know this fairly well, so I'll stop and see if you have questions, or I can answer further questions.
Anyone have questions for Sharon? Looks like we got any questions from the council.
Well, sure, sure. We talk about dog runs in parks here, but we've got some... We've got some sports fields that are completely fenced, that are used for... And I'm sure this... I'm sure you discussed the subject at Beaches Parks and Rec. I'd just like to know how that discussion went, because some of those baseball fields that, like up at San Gregorio, would seem like they're fenced already for dog runs. And how did that discussion go when you talked about allowing dogs off-leash on those fields, you know, at certain hours during the day, you know, 10 to 4 or something before?
It did not go particularly well with our sports groups. We did propose that, because you are correct. It's a lot of turf, and during the day, it is not being used that much. It's fenced. But we did get an awful lot of resistance from, you know, both our girls' softball, our baseball. And basically, the position they took was that they have volunteers, and now their volunteers who have to do the field maintenance are now going to go out and they're going to have to scout, because they believe that dog waste would be there. They really had issue with, you know, their kids coming out in shiny uniforms and having to deal with dog waste. So, we did get an awful lot of pushback on that, and so, we did restrict that, that the sports fields would not be open to dogs. Part of this, you may remember, was for us to look at perhaps creating dog runs in other parks. That's a bigger chunk of work, so we'll be coming back to you with that. An item that's moving through Beaches Parks and Recreation Commission now is a proposal to use the old Trap and Skeet Range as an interim dog park that would serve more of the south into town. It's a fairly inexpensive endeavor, somewhere around $35,000 to fence that. And we'll be bringing that to you as an idea of an interim. And we say interim because we'll be doing a Beaches Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and we wouldn't want to maybe preclude other uses for that. But we figured that you could probably get five or six years out of interim use before we ever got a plan together and monies to do anything different. So, we are trying to figure out ways to deal with the dog run issue, but the sports groups were very adamant that we not open those up to dogs. And so, that's why you have the recommendation.
Hi, Sharon. You, in part, answered my question. I'm extremely keen on getting this park master plan moving forward. I'm actually bummed out to hear you say it's got a five-year time horizon, but that's government. But my question was going to be this. Will the park master plan include a 360 on how we're treating animals in our recreation system? Are you envisioning it that way?
It certainly can. You know, what I envision...
Well, should it? I don't know. I'm not saying it should. I'm asking you if it should.
It will look at all park uses, and since dogs are part of our park use, it will certainly look at that. And we will probably have some survey questions asking about how people use parks, so we may hear back from them. I want to use my dog more in the park, or there are too many dogs in the park. So, I'm sure we'll get some feedback regarding that.
Okay. So, we are going forward with the park master plan, and it may or may not inform our decisions tonight.
The park master plan is in this year's budget. It is requesting monies for the 2015 fiscal year.
Okay.
And so, should we get that funding, then we would do a request for a proposal and begin that work.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a... Not related to this issue, but you mentioned $35,000 for the shooting range being fenced in, coming up in the next year or two.
Sooner than that, we'll get an item before you.
Have we looked into sponsorship for that park, sort of like we did with the skate park with Ralphs or anything like that, Petco or...
No, we have not. Mostly on the heels of we have not had great success with Vista Hermosa getting sponsorship. The Ralphs Skate Court, you know, they have a name sort of in perpetuity for about $100,000. I don't know, that was the greatest deal. We can certainly ask. It's just we have not had great luck. And the Beaches Parks and Recreation Foundation spent a really concerted effort for about two and three years trying to come up with some sponsorships. That was their main focus for Vista Hermosa, and we just didn't get much interest.
Okay. I got one more. I got one more question, Sharon. In the resolution, we talk about the city council's going to add these parks. But in here, we say all future parks owned and operated by the City of San Clemente here we say "all future parks owned and operated by the City of San Clemente for public enjoyment." Now, do you have any, how about the Marblehead Parks? Are they going to be?
Yes.
Are they going to be dog-close?
Yeah, that's exactly why we wrote it this way, because we will be taking on new parks. Now, for instance, the Jim Johnson Memorial Park, which is really very sports-oriented, they wouldn't be allowed on, you know, the three soccer fields there, so there's a relatively small area that, you know, dogs could be allowed in those walkways. The other parks that are much more passive, and there are trail systems, those are definitely areas that dogs would be allowed. So we did anticipate that all of the parks, and the Marblehead now parks being part of our park system, all of the parks would be dog-friendly.
And those trails will be included in here? Is there any mention? I didn't see trails spoken about in here.
The trails are not. We have to do a little bit more research on what the Coastal Commission approvals were and the habit. There's some sensitive habitat in there, so we need to do a little bit more work in there.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, just a couple of points. Number one, I'm 100% behind you on this. Number two, I hope that sometime in the future we relook at puppy dogs on the beach. And number three, just as a follow-up to Chris's point, and Chris and I were just kicking around here, it seems to me that one of the approaches to maybe raise some money for that money in need for the fencing would be to get a group to approach veterinarians, approach groomers, anybody associated with pets, and maybe actually sell them on a monthly basis signage or something like that that could be on the fence. Just a thought. Yeah. Something to think about.
Thank you.
Excellent thought. Lori? Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you. Did we get a vote?
You know what, Sharon, I do have one other question. How does the City of San Clemente track encounters with dogs? So if someone were bitten by a dog, whether it's on or off-leash, does the CASA do that, the animal shelter, or?
Two places. CASA does it. It also comes through our Park Monitor program, and the Park Monitors usually have more contact. We are more in an educational mode, so we are contacting people and telling them where they can and cannot be. If the situation escalates, that's when they'll call CASA, who can cite. So it's a two-pronged place where we have those reports.
And with the approvals we made last year or two years ago, there hasn't been any uptick in?
Really no issue.
No, okay, that's good. Okay, thank you.
Sharon, you mentioned that with the first round of parks that we approved last year, there was an increase in the number of feces in the parks from dogs. How was the plastic bag stations going? Have those been up-to-date and filled frequently? Were they empty? What's going on with that?
We did not.
We voted against that?
Yeah, the plastic bags.
There we go, there we go. Okay.
Well, and a little bit of history on that, the plastic bags were fairly expensive. We did tee up that idea. The trouble that we have is that the beach trail, for instance, where we do provide plastic bags, we still find piles located there. So, you know, our summation is, even if you provide them, not everyone picks up. So staff has, we put together a little public service announcement about picking up your poop. We try and show that as a public education, you know, we talk about water quality. We also, part of the water quality, we give away bags, and staff is really trying to push, it's peer pressure, and it's your responsibility, it's your dog, carry your own bags.
Any more questions? Any more questions for Sharon? Okay, we have a couple of cards for members of the public. First is Brenda Miller, and following Brenna's comments is Don Slater.
Good evening, council members. Please approve this. However, I would also like to ask that the middle section of Linda Lane Park be designated as a dog park. I don't care if you fence it, but allow us to play fetch off-leash. Off-leash, it's kind of unique in the sense that there's no real busy streets, it's relatively confined, there's a slope that comes down from Calle Mecha, I believe is that street. It's fairly steep, and there's a slope that comes down, and so it's kind of a natural barrier to the roadway, and it's not used very much by children, other than they will get their boogie boards and they slide down the slope. But it's kind of naturally contained there with a fence to the right with the condominiums up there. I guess they're single-family detached. But that would be something that I would like to ask, because from the central part of the old part of town, to go up to the dog park at the end of La Pata, it is the same distance to go there from roughly Mariposa and El Camino Real as it is to go all the way to Dana Point off of Stone Hill and the San Juan Creek Dog Park. It's about six miles. That's a neighborhood area. I think it's a perfect and ideal place. And again, I don't care if you plummet with water. Save money, don't fence it, don't plummet. You're going to allocate money for signs, let's say, fetch allowed or dogs off-leash here is okay. I think the neighborhood can do a good job of monitoring that, and we do. So, thanks.
Next is Don Slater. Any more cards on this item?
Hi, Jim. I'm here for Friends of San Clemente Dog Beach and myself. I want to thank you for all the efforts that have gone forth to making San Clemente a more dog-friendly place. It's changed significantly in the last five years. I've recently started a campaign on Friends of San Clemente Dog Beach called Pickup Two, trying to promote people to pick up an extra one when they're out walking. I want to ask you to vote for the parks to be opened up for dogs. I think it's a great step, and like they said, they're being used that way anyway. I see it all the time. I try pretty hard to not do things like that because of having the website. Please consider the trap range as an off-leash dog park. I think that's wonderful. I really looked forward to the trap range when I moved down here, but it went away. But now it could be a dog park. And please keep an open mind towards a dog beach, potentially poachy beach. I tell you, there's not going to be a lot of seagulls around there, my dog's running loose, and I don't think they'll ever want to land again. So we keep the birds away. And thank you very much. I appreciate all your efforts.
All right, thank you, Don. Any more comments by council? It's your pleasure.
Sharon, is the shooting range designated a dog park in this Phase Two currently, or is it just a closed park?
Right now, it's just closed.
Can we designate it an off-leash dog park without fencing it in, or does that present issues?
I don't think that you would want to do that from a risk standpoint, but we will bring that back to you as a separate item with the costs involved and the idea behind it.
Can we designate it as a dog park until then, or no?
Well, it's not on the agenda tonight, and...
I think there would be an issue with notice to people.
Oh, gotcha.
Because it's not a park.
Correct.
So...
Well, it is a park in that it's part of the park system, the trap and skeet range is counted as a park, but we would notice it, and, you know, I think the neighbors probably right above the presidential heights would probably have some opinions, so we are working on that, and so you will see it very soon.
Can I also add? Well, when you're done, I have a couple of things I'd like to add.
As in?
Okay. First, in the event that you do want to consider allowing dogs to be off-leash in any particular park that you'd want to designate, you'd also want to make a change to another portion of the city's municipal code. Section 6.08.030 has, it basically says dogs have to be on leash in any public place, and so you'd want to modify that to say that, except places that are designated by resolution. And also, just a couple of quick language changes in Sections Two and Three of the ordinance, just to be particularly clear. And it's the same language change in both. After San Clemente in the first line of both Section Two and Section Three, I would suggest that you replace restricts access to to... Is my time up?
Your time's up. That's three minutes.
Change restricts access to to prohibits, because I think that's the intent that we're going for here. We are prohibiting dogs in those particular locations. I think best to be as clear as possible on that. Three.
That's two and three?
Yep.
Well, in that vein, Jeff, do we need to change the language that says dogs are on leashes in all public places, because we currently have two off-leash dog parks right now?
That's actually covered in a different place, so I'll get with you. I think the previous resolution does talk about Baron von Willard is off-leash, so...
Yeah, but it's a resolution, and it's an ordinance. You know, there's sort of this hierarchy of laws in the city, and sort of sitting on top, obviously, is the general plan, and then you've got the ordinances that are adopted by the city, and then you have resolutions. As a cleanup matter, I would suggest coming back with a change to Resolution 6.08.030 to be clear on that point.
We can do that when we bring back the trap and skeet, if they wish to go off-leash, and then clean up the Baron von Willard if you like.
Or even if they...
Because it does not affect this park, this resolution.
No, no, no.
This resolution is about on-leash, six foot, so it needs that.
Right, no, but I do suggest coming back regardless of whether they want to do the trap and skeet.
I'm confused, because the resolution says city parks where dogs are permitted off-leash, and there's language on that, and then the resolution says, whereas this resolution does not remove established off-leash use privileges at Baron von Willard Memorial Dog Park. So don't we have consistency?
You have carve-outs in the resolution, but you have an ordinance that is arguably inconsistent on its face with that. So my suggestion is, as a cleanup matter, let's come back with an ordinance that modifies Section 6.08.030. Easy enough to do.
Yeah, because the ordinance talks about all dogs shall be on a six-foot leash, so we need to say, except in off-leash dog parks at the ordinance level as opposed to this resolution level.
Okay, but am I not looking at the ordinance? And it says the city council may, from time to time, designate by duly passed resolution one or more off-leash dog parks.
Where are you?
I'm on page 9A7. Isn't, and it says 608020 at the top, so isn't that what we're talking about? It's attachment three in the staff report, and it's number two under 6.08.020.
All right, I do see it in Section 6.08.020. I will get together with staff and provide some clarifying language for Section 6.08.030 to come back.
So 030 is inconsistent with 020?
Correct.
Is that what we're talking about here?
Yes.
But 020 is consistent with...
Does establish the ability to have off-leash.
Yeah, with the resolution.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Before we make a motion, I just got some more comments to make. Sharon, it's coming back to me slowly now. I remember we had this long discussion about plastic bags at parks. It seems to me if the city bear the cost to put in the receptacles that allow the plastic bags, is there some opportunity for sponsorship for the actual plastic bags? I know there's tons of community outreach programs for animals in this community, and if you put some sort of advertisement on that device, so they replenish it and we just build it. Because to me, I'm thinking about it now from this perspective, we're now placing, and maybe everybody agrees here, we're placing higher value on the beach trail because we provide them in that location, and we're making the parks second-class to the beach trail because we're not providing there. So we're saying we're placing a higher importance on the beach so cleanliness than the parks. So is there any opportunity for that?
I wouldn't agree with that. I would say that what we're, you know, there is an intense use on the trail because of the nature that it is a trail as opposed to a park.
Okay.
Which is a little bit more discretionary. The challenge is that there's a cost-benefit now, there's a cost-benefit ratio here. The installation of a site with plastic bags in a certain location requires cost, maintenance, installation. The question is, to what benefit? We have no idea how many dogs are actually going to show up at these parks. It hasn't been tested. There's no indication, no data, nothing that would support that. If after a few years we anticipate there's problems, there's starting to be feces here, and the biggest challenge is that people don't have access to bags, I think then there's time to address that. But without the known, if we were to put plastic bags in every park without knowing what the actual volume of usage would be, it's too far ahead of the curve. You know, this is something that can be done if the need arises. The beach trail, the need is really well-established now, even though it's being completely ignored by some people, so...
Mayor, if I could talk, and this is back to you. Pet Project Foundation is an incredible fundraising arm, so maybe at your next CASA meeting, you could put out a request for two things. One is we're looking for a sponsorship for the skeet range, and two is we're looking for a capital program for the waste bags. But I bet Pet Project Foundation, they've got a huge volunteer base that can knock on veterinary doors, or, I don't know, they seem to be very effective, so that might be a way to get funding for both of these things, because they're kind of one-time hits. So if that's interesting, agendize that with Kim. Yeah.
Anything else?
I'm ready.
You want to read it?
Sure.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 14-05 entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California Approving the Permission of Licensed Dogs on Leashes in All City Public Parks, with the exception of play structure areas, sports fields, and Parks Emporify, Special Use Areas in accordance with San Clemente Municipal Code Section 6.08.020A", and with the addition of the wording suggested by our attorney for, I believe, Items Two and Three. Secondly, I move that we approve the transfer from the council contingency account 00120344900 to other maintenance supplies 00163542590 of $3,500 for park signage. And third, that we approve a transfer of $1,000 from the council contingency account 00120344900 to recreation special events expense account 00162944540, and include a invitation to me and my puppies. No, regarding that last part.
You'll get it even without the action.
I need a second. Oh, I can second it. Second. Motion by Everett, second by Brown. All those a favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Pass is 5-0. Thank you, Sharon.
Hey, Tim, the next speech in debate class you host, can I reserve a seat in it, please? Because I need to learn your style. It's fantastic, it's the way you spit out your words and make me believe exactly what you're saying. You're so good.
Unfortunately, it doesn't make me the additional money.
Okay, I got it.
It's all rhetorical.
Okay, oral communications, part two. I don't have any cards. City manager?
Yeah, a couple of things. I'd like to acknowledge Laura Campagnola, who's our new deputy city clerk. I don't think we had done that before the meeting, so it's her first official debate. I wanted to make sure. Hello, Laura. I've just looked in the back of your head here. Sometimes she thinks she's the police chief, yeah. And then, as John Kopic said earlier, we have selected a new police services chief. I won't announce that name until I've had a chance to talk to the gentleman tomorrow, so it was a late afternoon type of a decision. So council is obviously aware of it, but we'll be putting out something tomorrow morning, early.
City attorney?
Nothing.
Council member roundtable?
Yeah, I got something. Laura, you want to pull up that thing? Since we're talking about dogs tonight, from the CASA, they're starting a new program, or just a awareness program, the dangers of dog poop and why you need to pick up after your dog. Very timely, right? So, get lots of complaints from citizens about dogs in parks. Apparently, they're not going to Beaches, Parks and Rec, they're coming directly to me. So I asked the CASA to come up with something that they can hand out at the front desk and make people aware of the dangers of dog feces and why it's your responsibility to pick up after your own animal. So please, please, if you take advantage of the parks that we just opened up, or any of the previous parks, please bring a plastic bag, and please dispose of your animal's feces normally. And don't take my word for it. Take these beautiful words on the screen and memorize them, and please pick up after your animal.
Okay, I have two items. First of all, there's an announcement we have upcoming. The 2014 Leadership San Clemente Class that will start on Thursday, April 10th. Leadership San Clemente is a citizen academy that teaches citizens about various aspects of city government. Classes take place on Thursday evenings from 6:00 to 9:00, with each class focusing on a different area of government. If you're interested in taking part in this free class, you can log on to the city's homepage at www.sanclemente.org, or call 361-8200. The class is limited to the first 23 citizens who apply, and this class is filling up quickly. Just as a matter of polling, who here on council has attended Leadership San Clemente? The majority. Just kidding. I'd like to pass a resolution that would kick out all council members who would not take the Leadership San Clemente, or require them to take it summarily. Oh, okay, never mind. Give them their diploma then, Joanne. It is wonderful, though. I have to tell you, it is a wonderful class, and, you know, each time you go in there, you've got a bunch of folks who are really interested in learning more about it. I thought it was a tremendous opportunity. I'd encourage residents who can, please apply, because it will be very rewarding. And then the other thing that I'd like to announce is, this next Tuesday evening at our community center, San Clemente will be hosting the first decommissioning engagement panel for songs. I've been selected as a member of the decommissioning panel. It's somewhat of a new concept. SCE is trying to be very proactive in their approach to this. They brought in some very bright minds from local universities and from management folks to help run this panel, and then we've got some local elected officials, members from CUSD, other cities here in Orange County which will be participating. The advantage to having this here locally is that residents will be able to learn firsthand about the elements and the timing of the decommissioning, as well as we'll be able to receive steady updates as it goes along. So all those would like to attend that. Again, that's going to be this next Tuesday, the 25th of March, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the San Clemente Community Center.
I had a couple of nice events that I attended in the past few weeks. First off, last Saturday, at the St. Patrick's Day... First off, last Saturday at the St. Patrick's Day hosted by the Exchange Club at the community center. Fabulous time was had by all. If you missed it this year, you missed it because the food was great, catered by Carbonaro's. The corned beef and cabbage was absolutely first-class, and the dancers are always a highlight. The mayor showed up with, and I think, did we recruit any new Irish dancers from your family?
Yeah, no, we've got a few aspiring Irish dancers, and I want you to know that the Exchange Club has fans for life from the Brown Girls. Because they thought that was maybe the coolest thing they'd ever seen in their life.
Well, there you have it.
It was great.
There you have it. From, how old are your kids? Eight, nine, and 10?
14, 10, eight, nine.
14, 10, there you go. They had a great time, so...
14, 10, eight, and nine?
Yeah.
That's a weird way to...
14, 10, eight, and nine.
Is that Irish twins? What do they call those? Isn't that Irish twins?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
The other thing I attended was the change of command ceremony for the 2nd Battalion, 4th Marines, our adopted unit down at Camp Pendleton. Our friend Lieutenant Colonel Rob Wyler was relieved by our new friend Lieutenant Colonel Mike Wolonsky. And at all these Marine services at Camp Pendleton, the leadership is always, always appreciative to the citizens of San Clemente for our hospitality towards them, and they all feel privileged to be close to San Clemente because we, the citizens of San Clemente, do such a nice job in welcoming them to our town. So I want to thank everybody out there for doing that. Couple of other meetings that weren't so much fun. The Transportation Corridor Agency meeting a couple of weeks ago, as maybe you read in the paper, the CEO resigned of the TCA, and much ado about that. We had quite a few meetings talking about that. Pardon me?
Did you just hire him like six months ago?
Almost a year ago, yes. Yes. The other thing is that we're going to hear more about, and Chris will be hearing more of that, it's called the Orange County Fire Authority Standards of Coverage and Deployment Plan, and this is coming from the chief, and it's going to be a big deal. We're going to have some presentations at the Orange County Fire Authority. More to follow on this. So that's my report, and that's what I've been doing.
Okay, I just wanted to report on the fact that both the mayor and I attended the La Pata Extension Community Meeting, which was on March 15th, and it looks like the groundbreaking's going to be in April, and no date has been picked yet, but it keeps moving and moving and moving out in time. And the official word is spring, so, but April is what they're saying. There's been a lot of value engineering on the project, and a project that used to have five bridges now is down to two bridges, and they're using tunnels and a lot of landfill to kind of smooth out the topography to get the budget numbers to work. And you know this, but I'll just play it back again. It's a three-phase project now.
Did you just say tunnels?
Yes.
Like where they'd be?
Underneath, there will be traffic moving underneath the La Pata Road rather than over it.
Gotcha. I got you, okay.
Yes.
That makes more sense.
People that were there, I was estimating there were about 30 people there. There could have been more. And the themes that I heard was, most of the people were from the Talega and Forrester Ranch area, concerned about landscaping and sightlines, concerns about school choices because the current finish date is fall 2016, and there's some parents that are trying to decide if it's really going to be September or if it's going to be, you know, longer than that. The Whispering Hills development in San Juan Capistrano was represented. It's a residential development that's going on at the other end of the gap, so that was kind of interesting. And my final comment is that there was a 10-slide PowerPoint that was given, and at the appropriate time, we might want to have that agendized for our community, because it did a really nice job of summarizing how it's funded, what it looks like, and there was a neat video, CAD video.
Is there possibly, because I picked a hard copy of what was presented, but is there a soft copy that can be circulated to the council on that?
Sure.
Because I did have some folks who couldn't attend but did ask questions about it. I was going to be scanning that.
Do you want me to track that down?
That would be...
Yeah, there's two things. There's the PowerPoint, and then there was a computer-assisted design video that kind of shows what's been done to smooth out the elevation challenges.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Laurie, do you know the total distance was in the gap?
I think it's three and a half miles.
4.1?
Is it 4.1 is the most recent number? Yeah, yeah. I think the gap is 3.5, but the widening, which is the Phase 2, pushes it to 4.1, so I think we're all correct. And it's a very expensive project on a cost-per-mile basis, but it's also a really important part of...
About 4 miles?
We'll call it 4.1 all-in. There's the gap closure, and then there's a widening that happens in the San Juan end, and then Phase 3, which is Phase 2, and then Phase 3 is the Camino, the Del Rio, I'm sorry, Camino Del Rio piece that's back in our town. So, and Suckit Construction is the contractor.
And, you know, one question about that. I wonder why that, when that Del Rio connection was made, why they didn't plan the streets a little better and save a street light? Because now the Saluda comes out, and then, you know, 100 yards up the road, Del Rio's going to come up. I wonder why that wasn't done in the first place to tie those together? Yeah?
By design? I think it was requested by the resident or something.
Not tying?
I don't know the answer to your question, but this blew my mind. Do you know how long the La Pata extension has been on the books?
25 years.
Since 1960. It was, that's when it was put into the master plan of arterial highways. Yeah, so it's, I know. Well, and then when our general plan recognized it back in the 90s, that's when people started getting serious about it, so...
Was 1960 it's been in that?
Been part of the circulation system. It's just...
Are you done, Laurie? Okay, I got two points to make. One, you were the only person who didn't laugh at the name of the construction company. It's a whole crowd just erupted and laughed by that comment.
Is it Suket Construction?
I think it's Suket. I don't think it's Suckit Construction.
What? I believe it's S-U-K-H-E-T for the record. I've heard it pronounced a variety of ways.
Although Suckit Construction, yeah.
Suckit Construction, yeah. That works pretty well.
Pretty funny.
I think it's Suket.
Suket.
Yeah, okay.
Suket Construction. By the way, if it's Suket Construction, I need to talk with their marketing person because that will not work long-term. I'm going to throw that out there.
But in all seriousness, they are an Orange County-based construction group, and so it's, I think that's a real advantage to the project because they have local knowledge that'll help make some good decisions.
Well, before we close the session, I got to know what these three young individuals are doing in the audience tonight and why they suffered through this entire meeting. Government project, well, you started out at 6, and now you're down to 3, so what happened to the rest?
It's a battle of attrition.
Oh, you said one more? Okay.
He's passed out on the floor. It was a...
Are you in the high school or college?
Well, welcome. We'd love to have you.
Good choice coming here, as opposed to San Juan or Dana Point. Much better city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in.
Do we need to say your names for you to get credit?
We need to add something in that picture.
Oh, okay.
We'll give you some thumbs up if you want. Okay, right afterwards, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
We'll adjourn.
I move that we adjourn to the next regular council meeting to be held April 1st, April Fool's Day, 2014, in the council chambers located at 100 Avenue to Presidio. Close session at 5, regular business meeting at 6.